A meeting to order at seven o'clock and we'll rise for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which is stand one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Susie, roll call please.
Councilmember Groves, here. Councilmember Chambers.
Here.
Councilmember Southwiel.
Here.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Here.
And Mayor DeBoer.
Here. Election of officers, any nominations for the mayor's spot?
I would make a recommendation for Mike DeBoer as Sir United Attorney as our acting mayor.
All right, any other nominations?
Citizenship nomination.
And we'll close the nominations, we'll pick a roll call vote on me continuing as mayor.
Sue. Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Southwiel.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
That's a new order I got.
Look, nominations for the mayor pro temp spot.
You can have that position.
There has been somebody that is interested in that role besides me. I'm not opposed to keeping it and I'm not opposed to giving it up. Individual that has asked, would like that position. So if he would like to speak and explain why, I'd be more than happy to listen to him.
Yeah, I'd like to take the next two years and be the mayor pro temp. I've had people come up and it's all about visibility. Doing different things and being open and being there for anybody to come in and see. You know what it's like being when you're in your store. They come in and they always chomp on you, tell you good things and not so good things.
Thanks.
And I've been, after I won the election, I've been sitting here for a long time and I just think it's time.
Can we ask for bribes?
Handouts?
Did you go see how it didn't answer?
See again.
I don't. The attorney wasn't there, right?
Again. You know, I understand Marty's visibility. When he told me that a few people had come into his store and said that he was more accessible than I, I took a little offense on that comment because I feel like, you know, I'm here in every meeting, phone number, website, there's absolutely no reason why they don't ever haven't come and seen me or reached out to the mayor or any other council members. And it's good that Marty has that insight at his business. I just felt like that, you know, if they didn't feel I was doing my job, it would have been nice that they came and asked me what that is. Now, there are other people that have come to me that gave a turn with the business district, but the overall citizens. And so either way, I don't think you go over the wrong with either one of us sitting in that position. So with that, I'll close my comments and you guys can make that next decision.
There we go.
I propose. All right, do we want, somebody want to make a nomination? Would one of you like to nominate yourselves?
Sure, I'll nominate myself.
You don't want to, I'll support that.
All right, any other nominations? All right, we'll close and we'll do a roll call vote for Marty Chambers as mayor pro temp. Sue.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Southwiel.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
I will happily direct all people coming into my, yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
All right, congratulations. Mike, do you have anything for the council rules of procedure?
Yes, the rules of procedure, every year we do present these to see if you want to make any changes. I know last year we talked about possibly lowering the time for public comment from five minutes to three minutes. At the time, didn't feel it was needed, necessary to make that change, so it wasn't made. I did look through the rules of procedure again. And one thing that you may want to consider is there isn't, there isn't, there isn't any protocol for this. And you don't necessarily have to, but there is a parliamentary Roberts Rule of Order procedure that if you have a situation where basically you're deliberating for a very long period of time or maybe the debate is getting hostile and where somebody feels that you really need to vote on an agenda item, a council member has the option to make the request to call to question. If you make a call to question, all deliberation at that point immediately stops and you need to make a vote. You need to vote on whatever the item is. Now, not necessarily been an issue, however, it's something that I, when I reviewed it, it was something that I thought I should at least bring to your attention. It is in Roberts Rules of Order, so if you, you know, so I mean, you are technically covered in your rules of procedure by it, but I'm not even sure if any of you were aware of the procedure of a call to question. And if you wanted to detail out the procedure for call to question, we could put it in the rules of order, the rules of procedure, or you can just note that it's available to you and under the, under the rules of parliamentary procedure and Roberts Rules of Order, that could probably cover you just as well. But I wanted to make that, I wanted to make that aware to you if you weren't aware of it.
Shouldn't we have it in there then?
In your Roberts Rules, just for people to look at.
So, yeah, so what your, what your rules say right now is that the rules of parliamentary practice as contained in the latest edition of Roberts Rules of Order shall govern the council in all cases to which they are applicable. So technically, if you're following Roberts Rules of Order, you have it. However, I don't know if you use team Roberts Rules of Order. Or if, but you know, we could put, we could put a clause in there to, you know, dispels this out, what the options are, what you must do when that situation comes up.
So the last time we had somebody come to counsel and do a Roberts Rules refresher and Open Meetings Act refresher, I think.
Marty, you and I were on planning commission.
Yeah, I was the only one.
We had ours and Brian was there too.
So maybe we set up a refresher before we go and change any of them.
That's fine, we can do that.
We can change procedure whenever we want.
Correct.
I think we had the attorney for the.
Yeah, last year. And I was actually going to have her come to a meeting certainly soon, just to give you a refresher on that. And that could be a time we could, we could bring it up. So, I mean, I could probably have her come the next.
I don't see it ever being a problem with this council, but you never know in the future.
I've seen it with other councils where this.
I've seen it on other boards.
I've seen.
I don't have it there for you.
Yeah.
I'll go blind and not have any idea where we need to go.
All right, so we can table that until we get, a refresher, how about that?
Fair enough.
Okay, anybody else for that? All right, consent agenda this time has the school property taxes and the 2022 meeting dates. Does anybody have any questions or concerns on any of the meeting dates or any of the school property taxes? All right, motion then to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
And I'll support.
Any other discussion or changes? Sue.
Councilmember Southwiel.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
And Mayor DeBoer.
Yes, and I have one for you if you want it before you leave.
Thank you.
Yep. Citizen comment. Apparently hasn't been to a meeting all year. Old business, item A, Werewolf presentation, Michael.
Yes, I wanted to give you an update as to what has, what has occurred in the last year pertaining to Werewolf. We've done some testing and monitoring out there and I've invited Renee Hewitt from BLDI to come and just give you an update. I did put in your packet about forty pages of the over three hundred pages of both reports, so. But Renee can probably summarize this much easier for you.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make it a short summary and then if you have any questions, please feel free to ask. Basically, in the, in the last year, we've completed about half the work that we initially proposed in the fall of 2020 and last year last time. So we've installed a total of eleven monitoring wells of the twenty-one. And we've done, you know, several groundwater events to make sure we sampled all of the wells that we did install. We've found pretty steady concentrations across the site. We have found delineations, so basically the edges of the plume of the contamination to the north, south, and west. There's a little spot up in the northwest corner that we're working on. We have to get the vertical contamination, how far does it go down at the water table? And now we are going to be working on defining it to the east and that requires off-site property access. So that's what we're going to be starting on here in the first quarter, you know, working with Mike and the city attorney. And we'll be approaching those property owners here in the next month. So that's kind of where we're at with that. And then, yeah, I mean, any questions, it's kind of a brief summary, but.
Close my door.
Yeah, well, first off, how extensive, if you're doing it on someone else's property, you're still drilling, putting a well in, that kind of thing?
Yeah, so these wells, I mean, doing the work, I mean, it's invasive because they're big drill rigs and we're going down a hundred feet. However, the area of their property we're going to be on is wooded and it's not, you know, it's not next to their house or anything. So, you know, we'll, we'll be the least invasive as possible, of course. And then we'll have to go back and sample them after they're installed, which is a lot less invasive. Basically, just have to drive our truck back down the property, so.
My gen, people gen, I'm thinking they would be cooperative because you want to know.
Most of the time they are, you know, we do run into people that don't want us on their property. They don't want to know and this and that, but, you know, we have a lot of experience with, with property access. We do it quite frequently.
I attempted to read the entire.
Got to say.
Most of it made no sense to me. One thing I was kind of surprised to see was there was a hydro geological study done in eighty-six?
Yeah, that was the initial work that was done by a previous company. They had installed three wells at that time and then that was the extent of their work. And that was all that was submitted. So then when the state agency came back because the landfill was not properly closed back when it was closed, and then they only had the three wells and they didn't have delineation or anything.
So that's, that's when the state contacted the city and said, hey, you need to do, okay.
Yeah.
And the other thing I caught was that it was cited numerous times for non-compliance?
Yeah, yeah, we found all that in the records.
Meaning?
They, I'd have to go back and look at all their citations, but, you know, it can be simple things as paperwork. You know, there's multiple things that they can cite for. And I, they did, I think they accepted some waste that they weren't supposed to at certain times. And that's, again, what the, the agency kind of held on to and they're still holding on to and trying to make a sample for more than we are currently. They want to sample for PFAS, but we've held them off so far on that. But that, that will likely come up next year. There, once we get our arms around the, what we call the volatiles issue.
VOCs?
The VOCs, yes. We've said that we'll sample a few of the wells for PFAS and see, see what's there.
So, I'm sorry, most of those violations occurred in the late, late eighties.
They did, yeah, it was all when the landfill was actually open.
And they were all filed in Ionia County, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
So the soil samples we're doing is when we're reaching the wet soils, right?
Yes.
Underground? And I know it's quite a range, I mean, it was thirty-nine feet to seventy-five feet?
Yes, yeah, we've sampled, we sample about every ten feet on the way down to the water table just to see if there's anything in the soil. Thus far, we have not really found anything in the soil, it's just all in the groundwater. And we sampled in the, what we would call the source area where they actually did all of the filling activities.
Okay, so we did, we do have well there and we have tested all the way down through there.
Yeah.
And their, yeah, and their wells are about two hundred feet down, so.
Right.
Our knowledge is that the VOCs have not even approached that.
Right.
Are those three nineteen eighties monitoring stations operational? Are we putting in?
Yes, we use those as well, yes, we've sampled those.
So I'm getting the feeling we're going to have an ongoing relationship with you?
Yes.
Not to be.
No, yeah.
This year or next?
It will, it's going to be an ongoing, if the landfill isn't what they call properly closed, you're going to have to keep, continue monitoring it. And it's likely going to be, after we have the full plume delineated, basically you go and monitor the perimeter wells to make sure the plume isn't spreading and causing an issue. As long as we can show that there's no issue and no, no receptors for the contamination, usually annual monitoring, you can do that. And that's much less expensive than the investigation process.
The reading that you took between this first time and this time, is there a huge amount of difference that you're seeing?
No, the concentrations, they're, they're really close to the criteria, actually. So the criteria for chloroethylene is five parts per billion. And we're seeing concentrations anywhere from five up to fifteen parts per billion. So, yes, parts per billion, confusing myself here. And then their vinyl chloride, we've also found, and that is, the criteria is one. So basically if it's detected, and we only found that up to four. So you're not, you're not a huge amount above the criteria, but you are above the criteria and it's drinking water criteria and you've got drinking water wells in the area.
Was it well MW three D D that I saw you guys had a slight concern about or was that?
Yeah, so we have to go back there and go deeper, which unfortunately was not anticipated. We were hoping that next well, you know, we would get to the bottom of it, but we didn't. So we do have to go deeper in that location, yeah.
This was an interesting read, I got about sixty percent of it, I knew. Because of the forty percent, I just went. Because of the ground hydraulics and it's all these things that come into play.
Yeah, yeah, did you guys get the figures or just the text?
I gave the first nineteen pages, the first report.
Okay.
So I did give up, I basically gave up to the maps.
Sure.
And then once we got into the, to the tables, I didn't.
Sure.
Because if you look at the maps, they had, they had the table amounts.
Yeah, the figures tell the story.
Was there some type of summation that we didn't get sent? Because I was looking through it, hoping that you'd do a layman's summation.
Well, the, I mean, the, I guess the text of the report, you know, it summarizes the data. You know, I can definitely, you know, send you kind of what I wrote up for myself.
We just had our auditor present, you know, a very exciting financial audit, but then they kind of summed it up and said, hey, you're doing good, everything's. Everything's in the happy column.
I'd like to read.
I'll make sure they have that next time.
Well, I'm serious, it would be helpful.
We call it Cliff Notes.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Bye, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
So just to clarify, next, next spring, we're going to, or next July, beginning next fiscal year, we're going to be doing the additional monitoring if we get permission to do so. We're looking at next year about an expense of about a hundred and five thousand dollars at this point.
Correct, yes.
Is it going to continue to go up?
We hope not. I want to get the edge so we can be, you know.
If there is PFAS testing, that is not cheap.
It's not, right.
I don't know how much that is, though.
Has Eagle mentioned anything about changing up different things during this, while this process is all taking on? They could maybe step back.
Well, they, I mean, they continue to change their protocol, yes. That happens to us frequently, we're going through investigation and they come out with a new set of rules that you have to abide by. Fortunately here, again, you do have volatiles, but you're not looking at, the biggest issue right now is the vapor intrusion issues at sites, but you don't have that here because your groundwater is seventy feet down, it's not in the soil. There's, there's nothing nearby enough to cause that type of exposure. And again, because they're drinking water wells, but what we've defined so far, you're not going to have that issue. With, it's, it's not down in the drinking water aquifer and we're delineating it to show that there's not an issue.
Is it, are we going to have to do anything to officially properly close it down?
It kind of depends on what the state decides to do and I don't have that answer yet.
I understand that this year's state budget, they passed millions and billions of dollars to clean up sites. And I was just hoping that maybe this particular site qualifies for some of those state dollars to clear up landfills and water and everything else.
It's something we can definitely.
Add it to the budget, I'm thinking it was close to five hundred million dollars, which is what I heard in one of the state was right, right around, or don't quote me on that, five hundred million, but it was substantial amount of money that they had set aside extra for this type of cleanup, so.
Rockford. Rockford.
Oh, I'm sure Rockford will get there, sure.
So I'm just saying, it's, it's available.
Yeah, we'll definitely look into that and I'll talk to, we're going to be sending the reports that you were sent this week now that I've been able to update you to the state. And I'll reach out to the project manager and see what they would suggest if there's anything for this type of site. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Cool.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Michael, nine ninety North Washington.
The city has been renting the house located at nine ninety North Washington to Sandra Bartlett and Gary Diesel since nineteen seventy-nine. Prior to twenty twenty, the city had a ten-year lease that expired on June thirty, twenty twenty. In the spring of twenty twenty, the lease was extended for twenty-four months and is set to expire on June thirty, twenty twenty-two. In July twenty twenty, the rent increased from four hundred fifty dollars per month to five hundred dollars per month and increased to five hundred twenty dollars per month in July twenty twenty-one. The property is located in Virgin Township and the home resides on three acres. As I've said before, I do not understand what the justification was to rent the property for all these years. That said, the city needs to decide what we would like to do with the property and if we want to renew the lease. If you recall, the property was not properly assessed until twenty twenty. The township has a taxable value of the property of fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and ninety-two dollars. When you calculate the non-homestead tax rate of forty-seven point five eight oh two mils, the annual tax for the property in the twenty twenty-one tax year was two thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars and seventy-three cents. The city is up to date on those taxes. As I've said before, the property and home are not in need of the city. We have no use for it. It also is not a good practice for municipalities to be landlords. That said, Ms. Bartlett and Mr. Diesel have lived there since nineteen seventy-nine. I need direction from the city council as to what you would like to do going forward with this property. We can extend the lease for up to twelve, ten years per the city charter or we can notify that the city will not extend the lease further than the current agreement. And I've given you the last lease agreement. So basically, I need direction as to what you want to do with the property. If you want to step, if you want to extend the lease, we can extend the lease. If you don't want to extend the lease, I need, I need to know so we can start the process.
Oh, okay. If you recall, I was a proponent of a one-year lease. And then we started it one year and then we, I don't remember, maybe Greg was the one who suggested two because, I don't know.
We went to eighteen.
Eighteen and then to twenty-four, yep. I, I don't think we should be in the landlord business. I think the property is dilapidated. I think it's a huge liability for us. I think after we pay the taxes, we make. Yeah, three grand maybe. And I remember, if I, I could be wrong, I'll have to look back, but I thought we told them that this would be the last lease, is that correct?
That's how I remember it.
That's how I remember it.
I remember something of that nature.
I can look back at the other one, but I wouldn't be in favor of continuing to lease this property.
I think we also encouraged them to maybe find something else.
Yes, and go and try to find the help. There was low-income money, there's HUD, there's, there's all kinds of avenues out there for low-income people.
There was supposed to be some improvements on the property too that I don't think. I haven't been out there in a while, but I thought he had to redo some stuff that I don't think had been done in a long time.
I don't recall that.
They put in the lease of it.
Wood stove, something about a wood stove.
Oh, there is a wood stove in there.
Right.
That's a huge liability if it's not maintained properly. The last thing we need is a fire, you know what I mean? So that's what I'm, but I think two years is plenty of notice. I think that that property doesn't serve us at all.
Having not been involved last time, I had some questions and I got those questions answered. And my feeling is if we, if our word was that this is the last lease, then we should stick to our word because in my opinion, if we say, okay, another year, well, then we're just going to deal with this another year. Even if we say, okay, ten years, what does ten years look like? And what happens if, what happens in ten years? So I think that if our word was this is our last lease, then it should be our last lease.
I do think the ten-year terms were a way to maybe not deal with it. You know what I mean, do not have to be the bad guy, I guess, in that scenario, but.
Kind of the nice versus getting the job done.
I don't think it's us being the bad guy, I think it's us being reasonable.
Realistic.
And looking at what's best for the city. And I don't think being in the landlord business and sitting on property for really no reason, Light and Power doesn't use it anymore. You could justify it when Light and Power had stuff on that property. We have it anyways, right? We might as well put that house to use, but they don't use it anymore. There's no reason for us to keep it and continue to be landlords there. That's my opinion.
I make a motion that we direct Mike to terminate the lease at, what is it, June twentieth?
Yeah, I would state, I would, I would say that you would direct me to notify that we will not extend the lease after June thirty, twenty twenty-two.
Also.
And that gives them five and a half months?
We gave them two years, you know.
Right.
So, I'll support Kalis' motion. Any other discussion?
Sue.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Southwiel.
Yes.
All right, Michael, Resolution one twenty-two for the poverty exemption guidelines.
Michigan Department of Treasury requires communities to establish poverty guidelines for those who are unable to contribute toward the public charges. Those in this situation are deemed a poverty exemption if they meet all of the requirements. Annually, these resolutions must be reviewed and established. We have not made any changes since last year with the exception of the state making modifications to the income levels due to inflation. Attached are the poverty guideline exemptions. Yeah, the only change from last year was the inflationary increase. We approved this last year. So I'm recommending that the city council approve Resolution one dash twenty-two to adopt the current poverty exemption policy and guidelines in accordance with the General Property Tax Act.
Is that taking the current status of the five point nine increase?
You mean the three point three?
Well, yeah, but now we're looking at a five point nine inflation rate.
Oh, yeah, that I don't know.
Take that into consideration?
I don't know, the state of Michigan.
Oh, is it, I mean, it's, it's still not a lot of money.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I can kind of just.
I just didn't know if they took that into consideration.
The state has a formula for it, I don't, I could be, I'll be honest with you, I don't know the, but if we, let's just take a roll.
It's a question I looked at earlier when I saw it, just wanted to make sure.
If the, if it's the state, I would assume they took the lower end of it.
I agree.
Generally.
Yeah, they, it would.
No, no.
I just know it's, five point nine is quite a bit and who knows what this coming year's going to be.
Yeah, you're looking at about seven hundred dollars, like even for a single person, it's probably about seven hundred dollars less if you actually increase it by five point nine percent. So I honestly, I don't know.
They will win today.
Whatever, there's, there's got to be a mathematical formula they use to determine it, just like they do with everything else. So I'm sure it's like they do.
With that fifty-month.
Correct.
It's worked out great.
Any other questions on poverty exemption?
That's the only question, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution zero one dash twenty-two for the poverty exemption.
Any other questions for Mike? Sue.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Southwiel.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
All right, this is an easy one, signature authorization every year.
Yep, this is our annual authorization of signatures for city bank accounts and depository boxes. Yep, this is our annual authorization of signatures for city bank accounts and depository boxes for our normal authorized signature for checks. It's the mayor, Mayor Protem, myself, Sue Olin, Chief Erz, and Deputy Treasurer Lord Gerard. For safety deposit box, the two that have access to that are Sue Ellery and Amy Brown. And then just our, our banks that we use for our accounts, we use Union Bank and Ada, Huntington Banks here in Lowell, PNC Banks, Grand Rapids, Fifth Third Bank, Macatawa Bank, Bank of America, Mercantile Bank of Michigan. Reason why you have multiple banks is because of FDIC. So you're only covered up to two hundred fifty thousand dollars under FDIC. So you have to be very, you have to be very responsible with your funds, because I've seen this happen before, where if a bank goes up or under, and you have funds, you are not protected over two hundred fifty thousand by FDIC. So that is a reason why the, the, we use multiple banks.
All right, any questions on that? Motion to approve the authorization signatures.
So moved.
I'll support. Discussion changes, questions? Sue?
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salisbury?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
And Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
All right, board and commissioner reports, Cliff. Jim?
The only thing I have, a reminder that February fourth at five p.m., the LCTV phones for requests are due, five p.m., to Susie in City Hall.
Five oh one, yeah. Marty?
Mayor, next week.
Liam?
Next week is fine.
Same, Mike and I are meeting with, to get some trail updates tomorrow at one, and fire authorities next Thursday. Mike, city manager report?
I don't have much to report, I've been off for the last eleven days. I have nothing to report.
Okay. So with appointments, Sue is off tomorrow, but we're gonna get together on Wednesday and check all these boards, and we'll go through the currently servings. The only one I have an update on, I sent my application up to you guys today for the fire authority. So I'd like to approve that nomination to replace Dave. There's no objections to that? And then once Sue and I get a list of who's where, we can come back now that the new year...
And the calls?
Uh, that, I gotta talk to Mike Springer.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
She being with us, yeah?
Yeah. You know, so we gotta do that, I wasn't able to get all of them before Christmas, and then I didn't do anything for the last week and a half, so. So we'll appoint Dave Wixstrom to the fire authority, and we'll set everything else off for a couple of weeks. No objections? Council comments?
Got nothing. Happy New Year.
I'll try to do a good job from April two.
Jim?
Are we keeping the current boards we are on? Or are we gonna be discussing possibility of rotating us on some of the boards?
Put that together with Sue to see which one of us is where. Usually we do that after the nominations and stuff every year.
Yep, and I have a...
I came prepared this evening, wanted to start the year by thanking some people. First, I'd like to thank all the people in the Lowell School District who did not sign the recall petition for three members of our great school board. Even if I believe the number of signers claimed by the lady leading this effort, which I do not, she and her group were nowhere close to having enough signatures to put this wasted time on the ballot. So thanks for supporting our schools and for exercising your common sense. Secondly, I'd like to thank our city attorney, Jessica, for giving us the wise counsel to not limit or attempt to limit the adult-use marijuana shops in Lowell. She told us it was an invitation to be sued, and she was spot on. The number of municipalities being sued for any attempt to limit such shops increases every time I look into it. I'm really thankful because Jessica gave us advice that earns less money for her firm, and you don't see that happening very often. Well, there's been some people that have kind of poo-pooed that, and they obviously didn't look at what it cost the last time we were sued. And some of these cities are being, they're being chased by some big money.
Yeah.
And lastly, I wanna thank city manager Mike Burns for the great job he's doing looking after our money. In my opinion, he's head and shoulders above previous administrators in this department. We consistently operate under the budget we set out each year, and as a consequence, we've been paying down the underfunded liability of pensions and healthcare expenses for city retirees. We're chipping away at our terrible streets and roads, they're not all gonna be smooth anytime soon, but at least we have a plan, and we're working the plan. I might add that these budgetary improvements are happening even though we're being hit with thousands, a hundred thousand? Example tonight of the dump on Wer Road that was just kicked down the road decades ago and totally ignored until it reared its ugly head. Mike educated us on the proper way to expand our water and sewer services. Had this been done properly in the past, we might have a few more bucks to pave a couple more roads. So thanks for doing that. And I'd like to thank you guys, because I think we all do a pretty good job of putting the interests of our city first.
Good to have you asked. Solid work. Good job, Cliff.
I'm nose-brown?
I'm looking forward to twenty twenty-two, I will echo every word of what Cliff said about the school board recall, and about Mike Burns, and about you guys. And I'm glad I didn't write anything, because I wouldn't have been able to top that anyway. Jim?
I'll make the motion adjourned at seven thirty-seven.
I'll support. Motion and second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye. If you're opposed, we are adjourned. Happy New Year, everybody.